Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Council Meeting for September 26th. This is a special council meeting, not a normal. So I'll go ahead and have our city clerk go ahead and read the necessary language for the online system.
City Council is conducting hybrid public meetings pursuant to AB 361, which allows for deviation from the teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act. Residents have the option to attend the meeting in person or to attend virtually. The virtual attendance link was included on the notice agenda for this meeting. Please note, this meeting will not be streamed live on the city's YouTube channel due to a broadcast conflict. Those wishing to provide public comment can call 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of the meeting and remain open throughout the meeting to ensure the opportunity to comment on each item heard by the council. Written public comments can be submitted via email to cityclerk@prcity.com prior to 12 noon on the day of the council meeting to be posted as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by number or name. Please note, the public comment for special meetings is limited to agenda items only, and there will be no general public comments during this meeting. Those interested in providing public comments on the agenda item will be given an opportunity to do so after all applicants have been interviewed and before council begins their deliberation. Public comments this evening are limited to a maximum of two minutes per person, and each person will receive just one opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Would you all please stand then for the pledge allegiance led by Councilman Gregory?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic and for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
I'm invocation Pat, so unless you want to say something. I think it would be good. If you don't mind, I think it would really be kind of cool. Glad you're here.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this special meeting and the agenda items that are before the council. We ask your grace, your blessing, your wisdom to be poured out upon them. We ask your blessing upon this meeting and that your kingdom would come and your will would be done here on earth as it is in heaven. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Pat and Shane. All right. Go ahead and do roll call, please.
Councilmember Bausch?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Mayor Hammond?
Here. As our city clerk said, there is no general public comment tonight. This is a special meeting, and anyone having anything to say will be at the end of the meeting or end of the interviews. So we'll move on. Discussion item we have tonight is going to be considered a discussion item number one, interviews and appointment to fill a city council vacancy. City Attorney, please, if you would, explain the process.
Thank you. So we're here this evening to discuss the interviews and the process for the appointment for the District One seat. As you all know, on September 7th, the council appointed then-councilmember Hammond to serve as mayor. This created an immediate opening in the District One council seat. Following the council's direction at that September 7th meeting, the council decided to fill this seat by appointment if possible. They directed staff to notice the application period, which ran from Monday, September 11th through 5:00 PM on September 21st. We received 10 applications. Upon review, the clerk has determined that eight applicants are registered voters within District One and are eligible to hold the office. The selected applicant will serve until the November 2024 election, so for a term of approximately 14 months. There are eight applicants who are here tonight. They are Chris Beal, Linda George, Sarah Heinz Martin, Elizabeth Lee, Joseph Manning, Sharon Roden, Michael Seaton Hanson, and Daryl Schaefer. Before I go any further, are there any other, are there any questions or anything before I go through the interview procedure?
Any questions to Elizabeth for the discussion where we're going to be working this tonight? Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We can explain then to go ahead, I guess, the process is to pool. There's a, I guess everyone's present that's going to be interviewed tonight. We're going to pool at random.
Sure, you want me to go through the interview procedures for everybody?
Yes.
Sure. So I have written each candidate's name on a little piece of paper in my trusty hat. I will select randomly, and that'll set the order in which the candidates will be interviewed. Candidates not currently being interviewed will be asked to leave the room until it's their turn. Mary's in the back of the room, and she will escort you to the appropriate place. This is to prevent any candidates from gaining an advantage, knowing the types of questions that may be asked when it is their turn. So please don't share the interview questions with other applicants after you have completed your interview. While applicants are in this separate room, they are asked to power down their personal electronic devices while waiting. This is to prevent receipt of texts, emails, or other messaging from anyone observing the interview process, which would otherwise give the impression that the candidate is receiving advanced information or advice about how the interviews are proceeding. Candidates are asked to keep their responses to each question to two minutes. There is a timer that will be used at the conclusion of the two-minute mark. The candidate will be given a new question. Candidates will all be given the same questions. The questions are all open-ended, intended to give you an opportunity to explain yourself and your qualifications for the position. The questions will not relate to any protected categories, race, religion, national origin, disability, marital status, sex or sexual orientation, political affiliation, or age. Candidates are asked to keep their responses to two minutes. All candidates will be called back into the room once the interviews are completed and the council begins their deliberations. The council has expressed their intent to deliberate this evening, but will not vote on an applicant until the October 3rd council meeting. If the council comes to a general consensus on a candidate or top candidates, a discussion item will be agendized for October 3rd or a sooner date if chosen by the council to adopt a resolution of appointment, and the selected applicant will then be given the oath of office by the clerk. Are there any questions from the council or the applicants as to the process?
Good.
Okay. And the winner is? Chris Beal? Chris will be up first. If the other applicants can follow Mary to the back room, and we'll be in touch.
Okay, so I guess you're on too. We all these have to be turned on, so can you, are you all right?
Testing.
Yeah, you're good. Okay. Well, welcome, Chris. Thank you for applying. And again, the first question that I'm going to be telling everyone that we need to have an answer on is basically, you know, tell us about yourself and why you think you want to serve as a city council member.
Right. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Hammond and council members. I am Chris Beal, and I'm honored to submit my application to serve as the council member for District One. I believe that the skills and experience that I bring both professionally and personally complement the strengths of the current council and are an excellent fit with your adopted goals. Paso is my home. I care deeply about creating economic and quality of life opportunity for everyone in our community. I want younger families to have the same opportunities that I had to get ahead, little by little, to have a little bit of security, and to have a good life. And of course, these opportunities look different for different residents. I came to Paso as a young girl in the 70s. I'm a bear cat. I'm a single mom of a bear cat. When I was younger, I didn't always earn a professional wage. My household budget at times was quite tight, where, you know, replacing a flat tire was quite a hardship. I eventually got my master's in ag, taught irrigation, did research at Cal Poly, analyzed ag water use numbers for the county of San Luis Obispo. Eventually, I became the executive director for the vineyard team, a nonprofit whose mission is to promote sustainable wine growing. I was with them for 23 years. I oversaw research, education, outreach. We did education in Spanish and English, and we also did a scholarship program for relatives of farmworkers. Amazing. One of the highlights of my job. Personally, I was awarded different recognitions by my peers. I earned the Wine Person of the Year for San Luis Obispo County and another pretty significant award through the California Ag Leadership Foundation. I have history working with different interested parties, farmers, environmentalists, agencies, and I can tell you that many of those did not agree about issues all of the time. So I know how to navigate that situation. Is that two? Oh, is there a timer? Okay. Is there a timer to tell?
No, not really.
Okay.
That's it. If you have something to say, we'd like to hear it. But so you're pretty much finished.
I just have a couple of other little points. Thank you. I appreciate that. I see the roles of the executive director and council member having, like, requiring similar skills. So I bring that to the table. But I do want to take a minute to honor Mayor Martin's service to our community. He was a unique leader who brought people together to envision really a better world for everyone. And while we all wish that the appointment wasn't necessary, this is an opportunity to honor his legacy by ensuring that the city goals are realized and that we lead with care for everyone. So with that, I respectfully ask for your support. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. Councilman Bausch?
So Chris, thank you very much for applying, for being here tonight. It means a lot that we have this many applicants, so thank you. What unique quality or attribute can you bring to the city council that will set you apart from the other applicants?
It's interesting. This is something that I've reflected on quite a bit. And I actually bring a handful of skills which are pretty well-rounded. So I have experience in governance. Again, my experience as executive director. While I was the chief executive, right, I did interface with the board. So I understand the roles of the board, which are similar to the roles of the council in terms of governance, budgeting, oversight, being kind of a representative of the city to the city, both communicating information and inviting information to increase engagement. So with the governance, with my background here in the city of Paso Robles, with my outreach background, and if you ask people that know me, and I know we have some mutual friends, you know, they would say that I'm hardworking, I'm deliberate, and thoughtful, professional, and friendly, which I think is a nice attribute. Thanks.
Councilman Gregory?
Thank you, Chris, very much for applying, and thank you for being here. I'll give you a little tougher question. What do you feel is one of the biggest challenges that faces our city? And how, as a new council member, can you address this issue?
I would have to say that the housing and the homeless situation is the most critical issue. It's something that I hear about quite a bit, and they're obviously connected. We know that San Luis Obispo County is a very expensive county to live. We know that rents have gone up from the previous housing element. And so the affordability of housing, you know, is getting worse, and it creates a real hardship for renters, whether they're low income or medium income. If you're taking an extra $500,000 out of the housing, you know, a family's monthly housing budget, that is hard. I want to say that I want to commend the city for all of the proactive work that you're doing, the fact that it's aligned with the county homelessness plan. There has been, you know, the things that are happening in the planning department in terms of the zoning, which is happening right now, you know, prioritizing ADU units. We have a couple new developments that are coming online next year, which will make a big dent in reaching the RENA goals, which is a lot better than some other communities. So what I would bring to that table is the same kind of, you know, we're kind of 10th hour of this process. There are things going that I think are definitely on the right track. But what I would bring to it is energy, enthusiasm, deliberation, the ability to collaborate. If the council saw fit, I'd be happy to serve as your alternate on the county, is it H-SOC or something like that committee? I can't get all the lingo. I'm learning the lingo. But, you know, I care deeply about it. I think it's definitely a quality of life issue. It's, and I'm glad that we're taking such a forward-leaning role in that. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Strong?
Thank you.
There we go. Well, thank you. And again, like everybody else, thank you for applying. Very good of you. And knowing that this appointment is only for 14 months, what will be your top priority to work on for our city prior to the end of this term? And going forward, if you should win election next year?
It's an interesting question, right? Because on one hand, a council member is coming in, and there's history and context and planning documents that are all in place. So, you know, this position is one of five, right? There are things in place that provide guideposts for the work that we should be doing. That said, I'm, I'm actually really interested in the governance goals that have been adopted. It's not something that's necessarily as, you know, interesting as a bridge or purple pipe. But I think I bring experience and an aptitude to be doing, you know, outreach with people to promote greater engagement. And I wouldn't see that as being very disruptive. It is already an adopted goal. It's kind of a unique spring that I, it's a unique thing that I bring to the table. But, you know, I really want to commend the communications and outreach team. They do an outstanding job. But I think there are some initiatives that might be happening that could use some support, and I think that'd be a good fit in the 14-month period in addition to perhaps serving as an alternate on the H-SOC committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the fifth and final question is, what is your vision for Paso Robles personally? What, if you were sitting in this seat, what do you want to see Paso Robles become?
I really appreciate kind of the idea of having a diversity of opportunity for different residents. When we talk about economic opportunity, and when we talk about quality of life opportunity, that's going to look different to different people. For some, it might be education, to be able to get a little, another little, you know, leg up on the job. It might have a little break on housing costs, so you can have a little bit of breathing room, maybe go on a vacation, which is really nice. Quality of life comes in a lot of different forms. And so, you know, any of the economic development that, work that is going on, which is excellent, I want to make sure that's matched with education and training opportunities so that the people living here, again, have a chance to just get ahead little by little for a little bit of happiness, a little bit of security, and some breathing room. And I think, you know, together, the city is in a great position to be creating either programs or initiatives or goals that can help move that forward, which is very exciting, and it gives me hope. And I would like to be able to, you know, share that hope with other people about, you know, why this matters and how they're connected to their city government and, you know, different ways to participate. So that would be my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Okay, very good, Chris. Any final closing thoughts that you would like to give to the council?
Just really quickly, I was thinking, you know, and I mentioned this early, earlier, but I, I believe I bring some unique skills and a mix of skills and a little bit of a different life experience to this situation, to the council, to the city's business. And the more I thought about it, the more I thought how aligned those skills are with the work that needs to be done with the city. And again, if you ask people that know me, they know I'm hardworking and professional and kind. And I would be really honored to bring that to the city's business. I would be honored to help engage all residents in the community in this process. I think that's key. And I just, I actually, I didn't think I would ever do this. It was sort of a timing issue. You know, I have, I have time. There's an opening. I, I looked things over, and after some thought, I think I'd be really good at it. And so I would appreciate your consideration, and of course, if you have any other questions, you can ask all of us.
Yeah, we'll do that. All right, Chris. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you so much.
All right. Elizabeth, you want to pull the next name?
One is Michael Seaton Hanson.
Michael Seaton Hanson. Can we bring Michael in, please?
Melissa's working on it.
All I might do is go ahead and pull the next one and just get staff to have them, like, on deck, ready.
I can just pull them all and make a list.
Yeah.
And all provided to.
You could certainly do that. Good idea.
All right. So after Michael, we will have Sharon Roden. And then Sarah Heinz Martin. Elizabeth Lee. Linda George. Joseph Manning.
Go ahead, Mike.
And last but not least, Daryl Schaefer.
Okay, Daryl will be the last. Okay.
And I'll just run this over to Mary, so she has it.
That way they're all ready to go.
I got it.
Welcome, Michael. We just kind of interrupted our thought here, and we've got to kind of get everybody set up so we know who's going next, and they can be ready to come through the door when we're ready. So, thank you for coming. Appreciate your service to our city before, too. I know you worked for us many years ago. And the first question I'm going to do is ask you to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to serve as a city council member.
Okay. First off, let me just say, thank you for this opportunity to be here. It's really great to see a crop citizen step up, you know, to take part in the city's governance. So I am Michael Seaton Hanson, and I've been a Paso resident since 2000, AKA the 20th century. And my wife and her family have even deeper roots in this area, which is why we moved here when we were expanding our own family. We had two boys who both went through the Paso schools, and one's now in college, one's in grad school. So schools are doing something good.
Had the pleasure of working both of them, I think, on the youth, yeah.
Exactly. Youth commission, very, very active folks. And let's see, we, so I'm generally just always been one to get involved in things, you know, whether it's community groups, you know, volunteering, and, you know, done a lot of that well since I resided here in Paso. And also, I've worked in the public sector fairly extensively, numerous jurisdictions. And so in that capacity, worked with a lot of municipal governments. And as you mentioned, one six-year stint here with the city of Paso, which was a very fine time and very good organization. And let's see, I've served on numerous committees at the county level. You know, participated in committees with the city, including, like, the seniors advisory and the youth commission. And so got a pretty good, you know, overall view of things and understanding of our, you know, the city's organization, how it works, what city government can and can't do. And, you know, and have a bit of an idea of what it should do, which is basically to, you know, provide a better, help provide a better quality of life in the community with the help of the community members, with, you know, businesses, you know, with civic groups. It's all a partnership, you know, to make our city better. And let's see, I would say, I just wanted to say of Paso, that we are, Paso has always been a destination, whether it was back in the days of the Hot Springs, you know, the Midstate Fair, which drew people from far and wide, now our very extensive viticulture industry. And then, not to be outdone, the beer industry has really put Paso on the map. And, you know, ever more people want to come here, ever more people want to stay here. And so I would just hope to be a, you know, stayed and sensible voice in, you know, the partnership that the city provides in helping to, you know, direct the city to be a livable community, you know, a place for, you know, visitors, a place for families, you know, a place for a high quality of life. And I'd just like to acknowledge that, you know, it's a somber chain of events that brought this on. And passing of Mayor Martin has certainly been, you know, a sad milestone. He was really a model of civic engagement. And just say, Mayor Hammond, I admire your courage in taking on the task of filling such a big pair of shoes and all of you of carrying on his legacy. And I would really like to be a part of this civic involvement.
Very good. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Next question will be by Councilman Bausch.
Thank you very much for coming tonight and stepping up and completing the application and answering our questions. So what unique attribute, skill, quality can you bring to the city council that the other applicants cannot bring?
Well, let's see, I usually prefer any answer to that question with, I don't know the other applicants so well that I could say I have something that none of them have. What I do have is deep roots in the community. I have a lot of experience, as I mentioned, you know, with various aspects of, you know, civic life, community life. And I've served on, like, numerous boards and committees over time. Tend to bring, like I said, a fairly steady, you know, sensible, I like to think, knowledge-based approach to things. I know we have a lot of excellent people here at the city who, you know, explore the options, collect the information, you know, present those options, and it's, you know, up to the council, you know, to take the best choice at that point. My approach is to just break things down, you know, see, you know, what was the most doable? You know, what can we do? What has the most potential to bring a benefit to the community? And go with that, you know, say, I'd like to say I bring a pretty level-headed approach. I'm very into civil discourse. I'm aware that people can have very strong feelings about things and that I don't need to tell you that. I'm sure you've seen it firsthand many times. But I think I'm a pretty good listener and a, you know, just willing to hear things out and just make the best decisions.
Very good. Councilman Gregory?
Michael, thank you very much for applying and being in our community so long. It's very nice. What do you feel is one of the biggest challenges in our city that faces us right now? And how, as a new councilman, can you help us solve that problem?
Okay. Well, I would say one of the biggest challenges we face as a community has to do with housing. Housing is very pricey here. It's the downside to being a place that people want to go to. And I think that, one, if were I to be appointed to the council, I think my first thing would be immerse myself in the current, current, and see where that's going before I try to steer it in a particular direction. But I do believe that that's an issue that really needs a multifaceted approach. There is, you know, a lot of partners and a lot of approaches when it comes to housing, housing affordability. You know, there's many possibilities for, like, small housing, multi-use housing, you know, family housing, apartments, and, you know, like diversification of it throughout the city. There's also the issue of the unhoused, which is, you know, a prevalent issue. And that's another one, I think, that where there's many partners that can help with that, like El Camino Homeless Organization, and what they've done down at the former Motel 6 is a case in point. And when I, civic groups, I mean, we monthly go down there and provide a meal, you know, to all the residents. I think they've demonstrated an important thing with dealing with that issue, homelessness, which is that if you let a problem get bad, you know, it's a lot harder to fix. A lot of people who find themselves unhoused, if they have support and some stability, you know, then they can, you know, get back into, you know, the mainstream and, you know, have, you know, a roof over their heads. People who, you know, the chronically homeless is generally occurs when that, you know, when that safety net or those options haven't been there. So I think by encouraging those and, you know, the many So I think by encouraging those and, uh, you know, the many ways of addressing the causes of homelessness and giving people a stable base to get out of that. I think we can address that problem effectively.
Thank you. Good answer.
Good. Councilman Strong.
Yes, thank you. And, and thank you, Michael, for being here. Uh, I've enjoyed working with you in the past.
Likewise.
Now, I'd like to know though, knowing that this appointment is only for fourteen months, what will be your top priority to work on? So during that period of time and then going forward if you should win election next year?
Okay. Well, to start off, I think it would be just, um, running up that steep learning curve as quickly as I could. As I mentioned, since I worked for the city for several years, I, you know, got a good overview, but of things in the departments, you know, the city's, um, budgeted, its funding, uh, you know, its activities, its challenges. Uh, but I'm aware that, uh, you know, that I do not know everything. And, uh, so I would be trying to get myself up speed as quickly as I could. And, yeah, and I think I'd just be trying to, uh, be a participant in guiding the city in a, you know, its policy in a sensible direction. You know, thoroughly examining all the options, you know, that are presented, uh, to the council, uh, remain plugged in with the community and being an open ear for, you know, anyone who wished to express civic concerns. And, um, I basically agree with the city's priorities, you know, on economic development and vitality, infrastructure, you know, housing homelessness and the rest. Uh, I would just, um, want to be a, you know, a helpful voice in that discussion. Um, if I found that being on the council was something I was productive at, you know, a good fit and, um, I, uh, was, you know, thinking of staying on, then, uh, probably just, uh, try to, just, uh, focus on the city's, you know, livability. Can you make, you know, good public spaces, you know, good neighborhoods, uh, you know, a safe and, uh, place for people to visit and to live. Thank you.
Yeah. Final question, Michael, then is, uh, what is your vision for city? In other words, if you were sitting in our seats, what do you see for Pass Robles in the future?
Okay. Well, I would, uh, for one, I see a city that's going to continue to grow, you know? We are, uh, crossroads. It's become a destination, you know, where a, a wide spot on the road that's become a thriving community that is very widely known. Um, I once knew a fellow who said when he moved here in nineteen, or to this area, Morro Bay in nineteen sixty-seven, the only reason to go to Pass Robles was to go to the fair. Right? I guess he wasn't one for hot tubs, but, uh, he, uh, but now that is definitely not the case. Yeah. Now there are many, many reasons that people far and wide could cite for coming here. And so I'm aware that the city is going to continue to grow. And in fact, I'd see it changing significantly, particularly as it nears that forty thousand population. I think that will bring on a significant economic shift because that tends to bring in a lot of outside investment. Uh, particularly in like, uh, service and retail industry, but in others as well. Uh, I would like to see a city that had a very diversified economy. Uh, that way, you know, just like multiple shock absorbers, a city can rebound from, you know, any downturn in one area. Now, I know we have some pretty recession-proof things. I like the beer, the wine and beer, uh, many, you know, making that is, you know, become so identified with their area. I don't see that changing. I, do not see the twenty-first amendment being repealed or anything like that. But I still know it's good to have a wide economic base. Uh, so we have, you know, agriculture, you know, we have ranching, we have tourism, you know, we have wine and, you know, we have beer, we have music. Uh, I think we could, uh, work on expanding industry, uh, manufacturing, you know, on a smaller scale, but, uh, like we have over Commerce Drive or, you know, up on, uh, north end of town, also around the airport. I think that really has a potential to be some, uh, economic engine for our community.
All right. Any closing thoughts that you'd like to go ahead and add to, uh, what you've already said tonight? And, uh, then we'll let you be on your way.
Okay. Well, I think you've covered it pretty well, but I just want to say thank you very much for having this, for letting, uh, the community have an opportunity to step up and help out. And thank you all for your service.
All right. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you, Michael. So next we have then Sharon Roden. Welcome, Sharon.
Thank you.
All right. So I get the first question. And what we're all doing is, is asking different questions, but they're all the same for all the candidates. So please tell us just about yourself and why you would like to serve as a District, uh, One council member.
Well, um, my name is Sharon Roden. And, um, I've lived here in Pass Robles for over forty years, but our family has been in the area for over a hundred and fifty years. You know, I, I love this city and I enjoy the community where I live. And the reason I want to, I want to be on the city council is so we can keep the history of our town, but move forward in a responsible manner.
Yeah. All right. Councilman Bausch, you have the next question.
Thank you. Welcome, Sharon. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Taking the time to fill out the application. What unique quality or attribute can you bring to the council that the other applicants may not be able to provide?
You know, I don't know any of the other applicants, so I can't, can't do a comparison and speak to that. So I'll just talk about myself.
Okay.
Um, I have a common sense approach to decision-making and I don't have trouble making a decision. I don't have any ties to any special interest. I'm a businesswoman. I've managed our pistachio farm for thirty-five years. And I've done everything from run fifty to sixty man pruning crews in the field all day, two months. Uh, with thirty-five percent of them returning to, uh, prune the next year, the next year for fifteen years. I make contracts, um, I do budgets and I can read a financial statement. I, I attend a lot of water board meetings because we're in a water district. So I have, uh, experience in water issues throughout the state. I served as chair for the American Pistachio Growers that represents over eight hundred growers throughout California, New Mexico and Arizona. Uh, when I was chair, I testified before the International Trade Commission on tariffs, which we succeeded in keeping. Um, I've had meetings with congressional, uh, leaders, both in Washington DC and in the state capital. And, uh, with Secretary of Ag for California and the undersecretary of ag for the United States government. I have a depth of experience with water because we are in a California water project. Um, and I've also had some experience in LAFCO proceedings.
Councilman Gregory.
Sharon, thank you very much for applying. And, uh, I'll give you an easy question. So what do you feel is one of the biggest challenges of our city? And how you, as a new council person, can help us solve that issue?
Well, I'm gonna go script a little bit because I think there are two. I think public safety is the foundation of a healthy, healthy survive, uh, thriving community. And we need adequate staffing and training for both police and fire. The second, but not necessarily in that numerical order, I think they're pretty even, is infrastructure, which is the backbone of a successful city. We need to maintain existing roads and bridges while expanding our infrastructure ahead of building. You know, I've been fortunate enough to travel a lot and I know we're on a different tax structure than, um, Las Vegas. But I was there ten years ago and I see this eight-lane freeway stretching thirty miles out into what looks like it's the middle of nowhere. I come back seven years later and it's as though the whole city has sprung up out of the ground. There were shopping malls and businesses and houses and apartments, but they built ahead. They built the roads ahead, so there's not gridlock. And a real important factor is in emergency situations. For police, for fire, for evacuations, we need to provide for that.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Strong.
Yes, thank you. And thank you very much for coming to apply and for all of your many services already.
Thank you.
So knowing that this appointment is only for fourteen months, what will be your top priority to work on for that period of time? And then going forward if you should win election next year?
Well, I think I get back to my, just my last question, which is infrastructure. Um, I think that's probably where we need to start. And I, I know I'm the one being interviewed or being questioned, but I have to ask, um, the councilman. I know in other areas you can, you can float bonds or you can get federal loans to, take care of major projects. I think the city's done really great at grants and moving us through that, but, I don't know what the process is in order to attain that, but I would support something like that so that we could actually get some major road construction and take care of our roads around our, the existing roads.
All right. And a, uh, final one is being, especially with you being here so long, what is your vision for our city in the future?
I, I want to make it safer. I want to make it stronger and more prosperous. And I want to grow responsibly. I want to make it a place where people like to live and enjoy visiting.
Any final thoughts? Anything you would like to add to the council before we let you go?
Sure. I'll, I'll just read a little closing statement I have.
Good.
As you know, I've been managing our family pistachio orchard for the last thirty-five years. However, a few years ago, I took a half a step back to give the next generation an opportunity to manage the day-to-day activities. In fact, today I left har- harvest in the capable hands of my nephew and my niece in order to prepare for this meeting. Though still engaged in our business activities, this does allow me time to devote to our community by serving the Pass Robles City Council. I want to be a voice and an advocate for those who hold our city dear. I want to listen and carry forward their concerns and their good ideas. I want to work for them and with you to make our city safer, stronger and more prosperous. I thank you for your time and I humbly ask for your vote for this appointment to the Pass Robles City Council.
Thank you very much for coming, Sharon.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Next is Sarah Heinz Martin.
Okay. Yeah. Good. Turn off the mics. Yeah, I think you can do it. Welcome, Sarah.
You're happy, me.
All right. So we're gonna, each of us have a question for you.
Okay.
And I'm gonna start out and I'll finish up at the end. So tell us a little bit about yourself first off, and then why you would like to serve as a District One city council member.
Okay. My name is Sarah Heinz Martin, um, and I have been in Pass Robles since my son was two, so that's been sixteen years. Um, I have been in the kind of vicinity pretty much for the whole, my whole life, actually. I grew up in Hanford. Family would come over here and visit, so I've been in the area a lot. Um, uh, married, like I said, I have an eighteen-year-old son. He went to Georgia Brown. His name is Javier. He's been, you know, I'm glad I got him graduated, so that was hard during COVID, but, um, so why do I want to join? The council, I, just like I said, I love living here. I love the community. Um, I'm, I want to see it grow and also continue to keep that small charm that, that Paso has here, but have it grow economic development and make sure that we keep the, the cogs rolling. That's, that's kind of what I want to.
Okay. Very good. Councilman Bausch.
You're very much welcome, Sarah. Thanks for being here tonight. Uh, what unique quality or attribute can you bring to the city council that the other applicants might not be able to bring?
I think in my time with, um, being on several boards, I was on the Main Street Board for a long time. I was on the, the Chamber Board for a long time, still am. Um, being in other boards with my association with my, um, what I do, my profession, um, I've learned to listen. And I've learned to take all different opinions and considerations into consideration. Um, I think that's very important because when you're closed-minded, you're not listening, you're going to be closed off. Um, and you're not going to hear something that maybe you need to hear or that you should pick up on. So I think listening and, um, not being quick to make up my mind is very important. You're welcome.
Councilman Gregory.
Thank you very much for being here, participating with us. So what do you feel, um, is one of the biggest challenges that our city faces? And how you, as a new council person, would help repair, fix that?
I think the biggest challenge that we face is we've got people that want to have this, uh, community grow. And we have a lot of pushback from people who've been here a very long time. And I think to find that balance where you are listening to everybody and finding that, um, like I said, balance, because you can't stay stagnant. Otherwise, this, this town is going to die. You have to find ways to, um, to continue to grow, but then also keep the locals happy. There's a lot of, you know, spinning tops that you've got to kind of manage. Um, so, but there's, there has to be a way to, um, bridge both the locals, the tourists, the people who are local but want to progress and the ones who want to kind of keep us back. There's got to be a way to, to keep everybody talking is the big thing, having that communication. Um, and, and just find ways to provide, um, the service to, like I said, keep everybody talking and, and moving forward.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilman Strong.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for applying. And my question is, knowing that the appointment is on for fourteen months, what will be your top priority to work on during that period of time and going forward if you should win election next year?
I think the top priority, there's, there's so many things that are important, but I think the, the economic development, continuing that, um, the progression that we've made, spaceport is, is extremely important. And, and my husband's a big space guy, so he's really following that closely. Um, so I think just to, uh, embrace new technologies and people that want to come in and, and, um, invest in the, in the town is very important and keep the, the momentum going. And you had the second part of the, I'm sorry, what was the second part of that?
And going forward.
Yeah. Oh, going forward. I think just to, to, to continue with that momentum. Once you get the flywheel going, I think that's the hardest part is getting that flywheel going. Once you get it, the moving parts are going, um, it's easy to keep that momentum and to build onto, onto that. And I think so far you guys have done a really good job getting the momentum started. We just need to continue on with that and, and build that further.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Fred. So as a mother, businesswoman, what is your vision for the city?
Well, I think I want to have my son stay in Paso and it's really expensive to live here and, um, it's hard for him to find, um, gain full employment. He's, was not scholastic. I mean, like I said, barely got him through COVID to graduate. Thank God that happened. Um, and I want to have jobs that are here for people who are not collegiate, who don't, you, blue collar jobs. We need more of those. We need more, um, we, we need to, to encourage our, our kids to stay here and to grow the community because at some point we're all going to be old. we, we need to, to encourage our, our kids to stay here and to grow the community, because at some point we're all gonna be old. And we can't have, we can't have the vitality of this city if we don't have the young staying here to, to build on that. And I think that's really important.
You're good. Any closing thoughts that you'd like to share with the council before we let you go?
I don't think so.
Good?
I'm good. Thank you for the opportunity, I really appreciate it.
Good.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Lee is next, okay? Over here, Liz, yeah. We're gonna put you in a hot seat, yeah. It's not an ejecting seat, but it's just a hot seat.
Thank you.
Welcome, Liz.
Good evening.
All right.
Honorable Mayor, Councilman, Attorney.
So I'll ask the first question, each one's gonna give.
And City Manager, sorry.
He does a few things over there too. So Liz, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be a District One Councilmember.
Thank you. Well, um, I am a proud citizen, uh, have been here for almost 20 years. And um, I was introduced to this place um, called Pass Robles back in 1995, when I was just finishing up my undergrad degree and I was invited to go water skiing at Lake Nasmuto. And that was a beautiful introduction to this area and I fell in love with it right away. Fast forward to, to 2004 is when I moved here permanently and um, didn't know what to expect. Coming from Chicago originally, a city girl. My Uncle Nick, I don't know if anyone knows your Uncle Nick, Nick the Barber on Creston Road, he's now retired. He introduced me to um, Century 21 where some of the third and fourth generation Pass Robles worked. And so immediately I understood, just from being around them, what Pass Robles was all about. Right away, it just integrated, they accepted me and I really appreciated the fact that I was accepted by a place where there's some clear, deep roots here. That if you're not from Pass Robles, if you weren't born here, you're not from here, is that right? So um, just the fact that, that meant a lot to me, that they accepted me. Being a first-generation American, um, being a minority, uh, this community accepted me. So I think, okay, I'm getting emotional, but I truly care about this community. And I um, started a business uh, in 2000, right after the economic downturn in 2009, because I saw the devastation, am I timed out? Um, of this community. And it really affected me and impacted me um, greatly. So I wanted to give back to the community in, back in 2009. And I started with my partner, life partner and business partner, created a philanthropic business. I do real estate, heart-to-heart real estate. And so for all of our sales, we wanted to give back to the community so that we can lift up um, the devastation that was happening with businesses closing, uh, organizations not getting funds. And so we launched that. And through that, we met so many different people um, from this community. From organizations to people who, who are the resources and the backbone of this community. And it made me even that much more connected to what we have here, which is so incredibly special. And um, so I want to start giving back even more than I am already doing and I don't like to give people my accolades, but with my efforts and my, my uh, partner's efforts, I was named the 2018 um, Hall of Fame Woman of the Year uh, by the San Luis Obispo County Status of Woman. And I was truly honored by that and also uh, the city of Pass Robles uh, with the late um, Mayor Martin, did a proclamation for me and that was very meaningful. As well as the local county supervisors, they also did a proclamation. And um, I just feel like this is such a special place and I understand its, its roots, as I said before. And I want to.
True, we're trying to keep it to two, but.
Okay, I'm, okay, I'm sorry.
So I think I got my, my answer out of what you were saying, basically you want to serve, you want to give back to the community, basically.
Yes.
To serve as a district.
Yes. Right, and then just the rest, just really quickly, if you don't mind, is just that I just know a broad base of people within the community. And um, I think I could bring a lot to the table working with you because of that.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Bausch?
Thank you and welcome, Liz. I'm glad you applied and glad you're here tonight. So this might be a difficult question for you. What unique qualities, attributes can you bring uh, to the council that would set you apart from the other applicants? Minutes.
Thank you. Well, I think that I have a very fair-headed, reasonable mind. And that I can look at things, I don't know if it's the Libra in me or, you know, I'm not that big on astrology, but I'm, I have a wide range of experience in my life. I, I'll be 50 there, this next month and I've seen a lot of life. I bring a lot to the table as far as my experience. And so I have a lot of um, I would say, real-life business experience. So I have, I'm able to, I've worked at the public and the private sector. So I know my, 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 the ins and outs of how to deal with projects within cities. Develop, I worked on a redevelopment project in Chicago where I managed a million square feet of office space and worked with Congressman Danny Davis to redevelop a blighted area. It was an enterprise empowerment zone. And so I learned so much from that. So I can bring a business aspect to it, but then also in working with nonprofits a lot through my current business, I just see so much amazing things out there for, for humans, like that, who serve our community. And so it gives me so much empathy to see what people are going through in our community. So I have, so I guess maybe those are the qualities, plus I'm able to reach out, Chris, as I said. Is it okay if I call you Chris? Because I, I know you. I'm able to reach out to like 20 different groups of people in this community. I'm not sure how, but I can. And I think that that's important to bring people together in order to accomplish tasks within the council's goals.
Very good, Liz.
Thank you.
We'll let Councilman Gregory go ahead and ask the question, so. Thank you, Liz.
Liz, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Happy to see you. What do you feel is one of the biggest challenges for our city today? And as a new councilperson, how would you help address and um, improve that situation?
I think that there are so many challenges today. Including the unhoused, of course, that's huge, it's major. There's our, the growth of our community, I don't want to list everything because you asked, what, what, how do I see this happening? But the growth of our community is something is of concern to me. And I know there's a plan. But we have to really, and I know it's been studied and I understand that we have goals. But going back to the unhoused, that's huge for sure, because I think we can solve that within our community because it is a smaller, I would say. But we have to understand exactly the data, like what's happening with that, not, I mean, I know there's studies done, but we, we need to look at the numbers. We have to house them, but we also need support. We need, we need a structure around housing. We can't just house them, right? Uh, we have to bring mental, mental care. We need to bring we need to teach people how to, how to live. I think a lot of homeless people don't know how to live. And we don't, I mean, there's different things wrong in that situation, but we have to teach them skills. Whether it be financial literacy or um, life, just life skills. We have to support that, because from what I understand, when there is an unhoused person living in the community, that costs the community actually more per person. And I don't know if my numbers are right, but I did some research. It's a lot of money per person. So once you house them, you have to surround them with educational things to make that a success.
Thank you.
Councilman Strong? Yes, thank you for coming, Liz.
Thank you.
And uh, my question is, knowing that this appointment is only for 14 months, what will be your top priority during that period of time? And then if you should win reelection next year, going forward?
I would say my top priority, other than the unhoused, and I mean, there's so many priorities, I feel, but I feel that we need workforce housing. I think that's so important, because I feel that a lot of the emphasis is on the unhoused. But I think it's because I am on the, the forefront in real estate. Where you see like my finger's right on the pulse of who's coming into the community, who's in the community and cannot afford, you know, just regular middle-class housing. They're being squeezed out. And it's very sad to me, because they're being overlooked. And so if we're going to bring in more safety officers, more uh, just, you know, just attracting, making this a better place to live, we need to establish workforce housing, for sure, because I know for a fact, right now I have a couple of clients. One works in IT, one wor- one's an artist, they make great money. They can't afford a $700,000 house. And that's so sad. We need to do something about that for our community to excel. Because it's, if we become a community where nobody can afford to live here, that would be unfortunate all around. So I would like to continue that if I get reelected, but I mean, I don't even know if somebody had a point, so anyway.
All right, I'll finish up the last question for you, Liz. What is your vision for our city? If you were to be a District One Councilman, what would be your vision that you would like to do?
I guess my vision would be workforce housing, um, upgrading all of our facilities um, to make sure that we, our, our buildings don't fall and just repair. I think we need to be a city that looks good and it takes care of all of our citizens. We need to expand on and diversify the economic base. There, our tourism is wonderful, obviously. It's carrying us majorly, uh, wine and tourism. But just the spaceport project, I think that's, I hope that goes through. I see that as a vision, for sure, to bring in high-paying jobs. Not just middle, middle median jobs, but all levels, so that our children could stay here, our children's children, that we can become a very um, vibrant community where we can support all levels of income. And make this a safe place, make it a vi- as I said, a vibrant place um, with lots of jobs, good jobs and good, good schooling, to do more partnerships with schools. Yeah, I mean, I just see that as a positive thing to just make sure we keep up with all those things.
Excellent. Any closing thoughts or anything you would like to briefly add?
I can't think of anything at this time, except I really appreciate all of the efforts that you've, you know, been putting forward. I know it's not an easy job and I wouldn't be doing this, because I know it's not an easy job. So I know what you, everyone here goes through, I've been to city council meetings and um, I'm, this is uncomfortable for me to, you know, just go through this process, but I want to do it because I love this community, so.
We thank you for applying, I really do, and we'll be talking to you, I'm sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next would be Linda George.
Okay, Linda George, next. Welcome, Linda. No problem, just get comfortable, it's, it's fine.
How you doing?
Very well. Okay, we're gonna have each a, a question for you.
Sure.
So I'll start off and uh, if you would, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be a District One's Councilmember.
Okay, my name is Linda Christine George and I am the newcomer here. My family is expanded all the way at one point to Santa Barbara. My uncle and my father worked for the school district. My father raised us in San Jose. There was only one family of us that moved to San Jose, out of the 10 of my mom's and the 10 of my father's. And so um, we would come up every month um, to see my family and I love this area. I know about San Inez, um, remember when the rivers were closed because Oprah moved and Michael Jackson moved and things like that. I never imagined, to be honest, that I would be living here. I thought it was a dream. My parents moved here about 20 years ago. I have a son, he's 30 years old now. And um, we, I really thought I would stay in the Bay Area. I worked with the state for 30 years, um, for 14 years, I started at the age of 18. For 14 years, I was a psychiatric technician at Agnew's Developmental Center. And we spent that whole time extinguishing and distinguishing assaultive behaviors. And uh, then I transferred to Caltrans for two years in downtown Oakland. And I worked at local assistance, so I'm very uh, very, I'd have a lot of knowledge about the gas taxes, how to spend them primarily. I then went to Department of Social Services for 14 years, where I adjudicated SSI, SSDI Title 16, which got me super acquainted with interpreting CFRs, POMs, government codes. And I'm kind of like a government code hoarder in my head. And I realized that that's what we live by in the state. So um, as far as being District One, I was just indicating that I really, I had a rough start here when I first moved here. And with me and my son, and after four years, I have fallen in love with Pass Robles. It is probably one of the few areas that still has a piece of normalcy compared to San Francisco and the rest of the state. Uh, people complain about some of the issues that go on here. I don't see them as significant, but I see them growing to be significant if it is not taken care of in the best possible way. So um, I live in a park, a mobile home park of, with farm workers. I've gotten to become acquainted with all of them and how they, how they live and how we all live together, sometimes goods, sometimes bad. Um, I'm very concerned about North County. I, I last read it was 50/50 Caucasian, almost 50/50 Hispanic-Caucasian, and I think there's a real need in my area. And I can see them already. I already started working with code enforcement and we got all the abandoned cars out on Spring Street. and we got all the abandoned cars out on Spring Street. So my, my goal, if I was in District One seat, would be to ensure that the, that North County is given its own personality, given its own way and its own way of life, depending on what area you're from. And um, letting them be proud of it. That's kind of my goal. And just to kind of clean up the neighborhood, I see that there's a lot of things that could be done. Um, I just went to Uptown Park and saw some really nice new waterfalls in there that I hadn't seen before. I was very happy about that. And I'm done.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you, Linda. Councilman Bausch.
Thank you. Well, welcome, Linda. Appreciate you, uh, taking the time to fill out the application. Thanks for coming in to answer a few questions. What kind of unique quality, unique attributes uh, would you bring to City Council that the other applicants might not be able to bring?
Well, I feel like I have a profound understanding of governmental processes. I think it's important for the city as a, a corporation um, to also connect with, we have Jimmy Panetta now as a congressional officer. And um, I'm a kind of point to resources kind of person. For instance, Mr. Panetta is into taking care of veterans. He created two memorial um, cemeteries, I believe, in the Salad Bowl, I call it. And um, I would, for an instance, I would love to see all the veterans start connecting with Mr. Panetta in their office to see what kind of resources and stuff that they can get faster because we know the VA is the VA. That's one, for instance. Um, I am always determined, I do not take kindly to the answer, no. I believe in appeals, I believe in complaints. I believe that if we don't hear what the people have to say about us, we cannot get better. Um, and I've done a lot of labor stuff. I'm more of a labor specialist than I am. Um, I was with the union at my state job and we passed fifteen dollars an hour. I shut down about jack-in-the-box for, you know, people. We protested. My first protest was actually here in Paso Robles when Schwarzenegger was governor. And um, it was the day that his expendable movies came out. So um, I'm really into, I'm not a politician. I'm not into politics, but I'm on, into ethics and I, I'm completely believe that the right thing should be done for people. Um, I, everything I do, even if it happens to me, if I can't fix it for myself, I will try to fix it for the whole. So um, for me, it's just really important that we understand that the government codes, the civil codes, the penal codes, we all live by those in California. Those are all our rules and regulations on how to be a Californian. And I believe in consequences. I believe that, you know, people should have to um, live by them, just like we all have to. So as far as skills continue, I'm a public speaker. I've been onstage many times with my own musical band. Um, I have a real reach into the Capitol. I'm already working with Addis. Um, I've not met Senator Laird yet. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Gregory.
Thank you, Linda, for applying and being here tonight with us. So what do you feel are one of the biggest challenges that our city faces and how would you go about addressing that as a new councilperson?
I think everybody's concerned mostly about the unhoused. Um, the unhoused and apparently your parking program is kind of a stickler here. Um, I've heard a lot, I've read a lot, and so I don't have, I, I really believe that there is a, if there's not a solution, there's a workaround. Um, you know, when you work for the state government, I was just saying, you, they give you uh, boards, a hammer and no nails, and they tell you to build a house. So you have to be creative. And I think that's one of the other things is that I really understand the government process. I understand the roles of each of you and I like reading city ordinances and all kinds of stuff like that. So I think I got lost on the question.
Thank you.
Councilman Bausch.
Or Councilman Strong, yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, we did that one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Liz, for, for, uh, Linda, for being here. My question is, knowing that this appointment is only for fourteen months, what is your top priority to work on during that time? And then if you seek reelection and are elected, going forward from there?
I thought about that question quite a bit because I am aware that changes in government happen very slow. And there, fourteen months is not enough to change anything. I wouldn't be here to buck the system. I frankly looked at a lot of the way that Paso is changing. You guys put a skate park here that I think just opened. The airport just had its fiftieth anniversary. Um, you guys have a skate park over here. That's really awesome. And I think that everything that Paso has right now is just fine. Um, I don't think there's anything that needs to be changed. What I would look towards more is, as I mentioned in my statement, we, uh, I've been working on my, my park. It needs to be upgraded. It's not worth the value. And um, we got new fire lanes put in and I got a mailbox on the side of the road. And that was, that wasn't too difficult, but I would like to expand that work out. Like I said, I already called code enforcement and they were awesome. They came and tagged all the cars and they got cleared out. I would want to extend that because some of the residents that I talk to, and I do, I go out and I talk to everybody. And so I've gotten a real clear understanding of how some residents feel here. And um, I think that uh, there's, I don't know how much money is in the budget, but uh, I'm looking for a street light to go right over our, our camera, I'm sorry, to go over, um, right over our property, which was what somebody who lived in the park for twenty-five years suggested. If they put a light, a camera right here, they'll see everything. Because when something happens in our neighborhood, right on Spring Street, they all come running to our park to hide. So things like that. Um, like I said, the Uptown Park looks great. I'll walk through the parks, I'll clean them up myself. If I see an unhoused person, it's not popular with the community, but I will ask them, you know, there's services over here. I think that's another thing because District Run has Echo. And I was mentioning, I think on Nextdoor and with someone else, that I think a good way to stop the bottleneck of people not receiving services is call, put a call out uh, with Echo, maybe a pilot project of asking for fifty-five and older, older widows that are maybe living in their cars. And they're are working, but they don't have a place to live and they're trying to get back to that. So things like that, where we can just use the services that we already have. I've lived in, in the Bay Area. I've uh, lived down here in Santa Maria shortly and I would, I would like to keep Paso Robles as possibly free of people camping and sitting in our streets as possible. I don't have a problem with um, interacting with them. So I have a few ideas, actually. My, my whole mind has been going about, you know, how we can clean it up, working with code enforcement, um, and any kind of vermin. I've never seen possums and stuff until I moved here and bugs and things I prefer never to see again.
Yeah, that's crazy.
So I mean, it sounds kind of, you know, I have a lot of ideas, let me say that. I have a lot of interest everywhere I live in a neighborhood. I'm always working with the, the local government to try to improve it because I think that as long as we take care of our own area, then that's how the city gets better. City has a better reputation.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask the last one, question, and then uh, that is basically a vision question. What do you see as a vision for our Paso Robles in the future?
The city as a whole?
Uh huh.
Wow, that, that's another good question because I was thinking about that for two hours today.
Hmm.
You know, again, I, you know, I've listened and read the complaints on Nextdoor, Facebook, everything. I find Paso Robles to be on a great track. There are a lot of amazing activities for youth. It blows my mind. I went to a rodeo for the first time. And um, I'm sitting there looking at my friend, is this hard? They're trying to, I don't know, tie a cow together. I don't know what they were doing. But you know, in the city, I tried to explain to my friend in the city, in the Bay Area, that's a niche lifestyle. Okay, but that is a lifestyle here. And that's what's amazing about Paso Robles is that there's so many different lifestyles and everybody's just living together and doing it together. And I think that's what's awesome about it. As far as a vision, dealing with the with the unaffordable housing, all the new laws are coming down about CEQA and all the rein in numbers, all what we're supposed to have, I would like to be more of a protector of our hu- housing and try to keep low-income housing low as possible. Because I think this is a wonderful area to have both lifestyles. And it'd be good. So you know, there's a lot of things I would do, or I would never want to be mayor. I've always been a worker bee. I was dubbed the shift lead from H E L L when I was a kid, so. I was told my qualities back when I was nineteen years old not to do that. So I'm a worker bee. I will, if something is difficult, I will go research it and research it until I find the answer. And um, I absolutely would love to see the council interacting with, with the Assembly, Laird, Panetta. Because I think that's what we're here for. And, and he opened up an office recently in our city. I mean, I'm down to the point where I would love to see Paso Robles be a one-stop shop for tourists and for locals. And I think I wrote that, it's, came to my head is, if we, we need to treat locals like tourists and tourists like locals. Everybody needs to be treated the same. Even if, you know, they don't feel that. But um, I think that this is a great city. I'm really impressed with it. I, I looked at the Rolling Hills project. I looked at the Forty-Six project. I know there's a little secret on Forty-Six you haven't told us. There's a little unencumbered portion of that, of that project that there's, we still need funds for.
Yeah.
And I compared it to the Caltrans website, and that's what I mean. I will be over there. But I'm not here to buck the system. I certainly don't want to be mayor. I think a year is a great opportunity to just enhance what we have.
So any closing thoughts that you, that you would like to add briefly before we let you go?
No, I mean incredibly, um, I never thought a day would come here that I'd be sitting here, to be honest, because I've always been the pitchfork carrier and go, accountability, accountability. But what I realized also is that accountability doesn't stop with us or you. It starts with, it starts with the public too. If they want us to behave a certain way, then they have to help us do that. And I think that I would be, I'm more into outreach, you know, it's going out, talking to people and stuff like that. So I've met a lot of people, even on the opposition of the water hike. And I've come in here a few times with my pitchfork, but you know, um, the water hike, that was kind of personal. Our park was raising the water rates and you guys were raising the water rates and I said, no, low-income housing low. So that's why I came here that day, because I wanted to do what I can to keep the rents low. So no, I mean, overall, I just really enjoy Paso Robles. Um, the first couple of years, I was losing my vision. I got it back. And I see things, this is a beautiful city. I don't even want to call it a city. It's still a town as far as I'm concerned. But yeah, my biggest goal is to make sure that the locals feel like they're still included with everything as we grow.
We want to thank you for applying and stay engaged if
Always.
things don't work it today, but again, we thank you for coming tonight and we'll let you know how things are gonna go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Joseph Manning.
Joseph, up here, thank you. Have a seat. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying and coming forward to answer some questions of council. I'll start off with the first one. Each one of us will have a question for you.
Alrighty.
So mine is to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be a District One Councilmember.
Well, I've been roundabout Paso my whole life, uh, lived in the town proper since two thousand and seven, if I remember right. Um, always had good examples. My mom was on school boards my whole life, so civic participation is important to me. And I happen to be at a point in my life when I have the time to really dedicate to it. So happy to be here and hopefully get a chance to work alongside y'all to help shepherd Paso forward. I've seen so much growth in this town over the years and um, kind of reviewing with my fellow applicants in there, I'm surprised how much of it feels positive. Um, I think we've grown mostly really well. There's a few things that we've, I think, missed. We've missed some opportunities with water rights and with our parking and traffic situation downtown. Um, not being in the room, I don't know what all y'all had to balance to make decisions you made, but um, you know, I've certainly done my fair share of griping, but I try not to do that without being willing to step forward and participate. So here I am.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next question by Councilman Bausch.
Thank you. Welcome, Joseph, and I appreciate you taking the time to fill out the application for coming down tonight and answering some questions. So what kind of unique attributes, qualities, talents would you be able to bring to the City Council that the other applicants won't be able to?
I was just talking about this a minute ago, cheating. Not really. Um, I've been in grad school, I've been in grad school the last couple of years and I have uh, found a lot of technical ways to absorb a lot more information than I could as a regular old meat sack, so. Being able to absorb a lot has become a special talent from last year or so, that's one thing. Uh, I also think I'm a pretty good problem solver, uh, and I definitely am a creative thinker, so uh, hopefully that's something I could bring to the table and um, and help with some of those issues that, that always require a delicate balance of inputs, outputs and resources.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Gregory.
Yeah, Joseph, thank you very much for applying and being here.
Thank you.
So what do you feel is one of the biggest challenges that our city faces? And how can you, as a new councilperson, help us get through that?
I think by far the biggest challenge we face is the income disparity combined with the, the jobs forecast for our area. Uh, if we go ahead and build a shipping center out here for Amazon, which is on the horizon, I think the risk there is bringing in a lot of low-quality jobs that will not be a net positive for the community. Um, a lot of those big companies have that reputation of coming in, bringing big-dollar deals and then training resource from an area, and I would hate to see that happen here. I think that, on the other hand, the spaceport has the opportunity to bring several, a couple of handfuls, not hundreds, but dozens maybe, of really good, high-quality jobs. And so I love that that's on our horizon as well. Uh, I have a few safety concerns there, but you know, it's far enough out that they're still in process, so I'm sure they can be remedied. But the balance to me between possibly having a huge number of low-quality jobs versus a small number of high-quality jobs, combined with our limited housing creates the, I mean, the Gordian knot of Paso's next twenty years. For us to not topple our economy with low-quality jobs and high-priced housing is going to require a lot of finesse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Strong.
Um, thank you. My question is, knowing that this appointment is only fourteen months long, what will be your top priority to work on in that time? And then if you run for reelection and are elected next year, going forward from there?
I think the biggest thing I could hope to do in fourteen months is bring a point of view to the council that might bring in something new and to absorb enough to be ready for the job next time around. I don't expect to hit any home runs in fourteen months. Um, I very much expect it to be a, a steep learning curve. Well, people usually get that wrong. A shallow, difficult learning curve is what you're really looking at, but what we say is a steep learning curve. Hopefully it'll be this and I'll learn a lot very fast, but you never know. So yeah, learning is the first fourteen months. And if I were to win reelection, hopefully I'd be ready to really be a strong presence on the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. So Joseph, I've got the last question and that is basically, what's your vision for the city? If you were in District One and you had that seat, how would you try to carve out the vision for Paso Robles?
Well, I think that we cling really hard to our small-town image, but we have a lot of bigger city problems. I think the biggest thing we could do as far as shifting gears in the near term is to learn to build up. Um, I think to get the kind of housing affordability we need, we're gonna have to have larger-scale housing structures. We're gonna have to find a place to put them. And we're gonna have to find ways to get water to them. Water is a huge challenge here, always has been, probably always will be. Aside from the traditional routes of uh, you know, water deals, I hope we would be able to find some ways to contribute to other technology, technological solutions. But because most of those rely on a little more proximity to the coast, that would have to be done in partnership with other communities. Um, so my vision for Paso as the northernmost city in a chain that goes further down the coast is to hopefully take an inspiration and leadership role in some inter uh, inter, like, in some regional organizations to build projects that we can all share. Because right now, the one-on-one's the only thing that really connects us all. And I think that long-term moonshot ideas, uh, And I think that long-term moonshot ideas to make us more connected would help us share the load and share the rewards.
Very good. Alright. So any closing thoughts? Anything you'd like to briefly add to the council?
Just that I got a little bit of time to meet my fellow nominees out there, not nominees, I guess, candidates out there. And everybody seems really interested and committed, which is a great change. I actually was gonna run for your seat last time around, and I missed the deadline because of school. I had it mixed up, the different deadlines. So seeing this much involvement is a really good sign.
Stay involved for sure. And again, thank you for applying, and we'll see how it goes tonight.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Joseph.
And then finally, Daryl Schaefer.
Daryl Schaefer, alright. Yeah, it was a I couldn't quite hear him, yeah. Okay. Daryl, yeah, we're gonna put you right up here. No, not tonight. You're in a hot seat right there.
Push me like.
Alright, welcome, Daryl.
Hi, thank you, John.
We're gonna, each of our council will have a question for you. I'll start off. And my question is, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be a District One Council member.
Now, how come we anticipated that question? Okay, first, I, I think I'd like to address my application, primarily because I was pretty brief on that.
Okay.
My whole intent was to be a participant and apply in case we didn't have a, a lot of applicants that were qualified. It turns out, I am extremely excited over the fact that we've got some applicants here. Any one of who could probably do this job, okay? But here we go. I'm trying to make this quick because I understand we're under some time limit.
Two minutes, yeah, basic per question, yeah.
First off, my employment and job history. I, I mentioned the appointment specific Form 806 and how I qualify for that. But nineteen, nineteen sixty-six, I left high school and joined the Air Force. Spent four years, one month in the Air Force. I'm a Ted Offensive Viet veteran. I went, I, when I returned, I went to Questa College. I spent one summer as a CDF firefighter. In the seventies, I started out as a convenience store manager. From there, I promoted to district manager, and from there to division manager. I did site evaluations, new store builds, dealing with, oh gosh, dealing with, you understand this, dealing with city, federal, state, because we had gas stations. You can imagine the can of worms that that, we faced with that. I hired trained store managers and district managers, by the way. One of the, my unpleasant activities, of course, was firing and releasing individuals that weren't up to standards with the wrongful employee terminations. When I was in front of the, in, whenever I had to appear with the labor law enforcement standards, I never lost a case. Me, okay? And unemployment insurance claims, we never paid one. Because I, we always dotted our i's and we were very comprehensive in that area. So our loss prevention and our issues were, we did really well. From there, I, I left that position and I returned to Cal Poly for my BA. And then after that, I established an insurance business. I'm also currently a licensed insurance producer for the state of California. I've maintained that. I did that for twenty-five years. I sold my captive agent contract value and took a position with the California Youth Authority out here at the boys' school. And that program, I ended up, I hated to see it go when we lost our funding. But I headed up a treatment program. I had, let's say I had four registered nurses. I had a psychiatrist. I had a psychologist. I had four treatment psych techs from a Tascadero State Hospital. And then I also had eight youth correctional counselors. So we went gangbusters out there, and it was an effective program until they closed us down. So I, I've got a lot of experience. I would like to also mention, I have a little note here. I've diverse, I, I no longer have any rental properties in California, and I have no business activities. So I don't have any COIs. I don't have to worry about government code eighty-one thousand because I, I have no conflict of interests. I'm retired. Hallelujah.
Okay.
So I, the, the, the plus side on that is I won't have to recuse myself in any council actions.
So there'll be other questions. You can probably add some of that in there.
Okay.
Let me go ahead and give it to Councilman Bausch. Chris.
Thank you. And Daryl, thank you very much for your service.
Yes, you're most welcome.
Appreciate that. Thanks for being here tonight, for filling out the application. Appreciate your comments on the qualification of the other candidates. It's good to hear. What kind of unique qualities or attributes do you think you can bring to the City Council that the other applicants might not be able to bring?
Okay, I don't want to be critical of any other applicant here because they're all stellar, okay? I think where I might be unique is, I was listening to KPRL the other day. And one of the issues was, listen, and I've heard it before, the frustration is they say, we can't trust the council members. First off, they don't have a clue what you guys do. Okay, I, I've got a list here of all the council member assignments, regional bodies, commission liaisons, ad hoc committees. This is crazy stuff. They have no clue that, the effort that you guys put in, okay? And the leadership that we, that you guys provide here. But it's I think I, I should share this with you. My commitment is that, you know, as a city councilman, we receive a check for a thousand fifty dollars a month and to demonstrate to the community that I'm invested in this city and in this position. My wife and I, we've already sat down and we're incredibly excited. We're gonna give that after taxes, you know, after the feds get their fingers out of this thing. Whatever is left, every month, we're gonna sit down at our kitchen table and we're gonna decide where that check's gonna go. So we're going, first on my list is Tree of Life. That's where the first check goes. Commitment.
That's a very unique attribute. Thank you.
Good. Councilman Gregory.
Greg, oh, Steve. Daryl. My neighbor.
My tree guy. You're my tree guy. How are you?
We won't tell these people that.
So Daryl, easy question for you. We wanted you to talk about, what is one of the biggest challenges of our city today? And as a council person, how would you go about addressing that?
Okay, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna go
Two minutes.
Okay, I'm gonna go out here on right field now. You're not gonna expect this. Let's look at what Steve Martin did for the last eight years before we, that, his tragic loss. You know, I, I reviewed our little short, two-page list, for those of you back there, of what you council individuals deal with on a daily basis. And every applicant qualifies for these positions as far as our regional bodies, council member assignments are concerned. That's not an issue. My concern is if you look at the California Form 806, and we've got a glaring issue here. Steve Martin was the risk, he, he was in, basically, the California Joint Powers Insurance Commission Authority. He was, he was our go-to for that. And it was his responsibility to be in communication with Tim Cars, the, the JPIA individual for this area, okay, for Central Coast, the risk manager. And in communication with that, we, we look at all the programs, the, the documentation, all the, everything from the, I'm not so concerned with, with, as an example, of risk management issues because that's, that's not really my area, you know, but the JPIA develops member training, they conduct risk management evaluations, managing member participation in the Authority's Lost Cap Program. They do all of this for us. That's part of what we pay them for. And it's, some of the programs that they, you know, it's, a lot of it is eprograms. You know, if, if you're a cherry picker operator, you can log on and do a little e-training seminar session thing. But what's coming up, and what my concern here, and I wanted to mention this because it's critical. We've got some academies and some that are, that are coming online. And on January twenty-third of this coming year, we need to meet this requirement. November is the assignment period, okay? Elizabeth probably is aware of this and tracking it, okay? But if she's not, I'm gonna give you a heads up right now. We've got a primary risk management responsibility. And our human resources manager is Sharon here? Jen or other?
No, she's not here this evening.
Is she here?
She's not here this evening.
Someone needs to talk to her and remind her that we've got a primary risk management responsibility seminar coming up January twenty-third to twenty-fifth. It's a three days, okay? Following that, we have a, we have the agency finance officers need to look at something that's offered March fifth. And who might that be? Captain, is she here?
Daryl, let's, let's go ahead and move on to the next question then, yeah, because we have a time limit here a little bit. So Councilman Strong, you have the final question. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. And by the way, I think all, all of us have been through the JPI school already.
Oh, good. I, I was not so certain of that.
Okay. But now, knowing that this appointment, that is only fourteen months.
Okay.
Okay. We want to know, what is your top priority during that time? And then, if you seek reelection in next year, what would be your top priority going forward from there?
Well, you're kind of jumping the gun here as far as, let's address that second question first. What would be my priorities? I don't know. I'm gonna have to talk to Steve, Chris, John, and probably with you too, Fred, and get some feedback from our individuals who are sitting behind me. Okay, so currently, everything's sort of being addressed. You know, I'm not trying to just eschew, eschew that question, but you know, we've got you four individuals sitting here right in front of me. And if someone comes up and complains and says, hey, we got some real street, street issues. Well, do we really? You know, you can, oh, I think I might have a note on that. Okay, the PCI, the pavement condition index currently is around fifty-seven. You know, that's pretty stellar. If you look at the other cities, fifty-seven. Maybe, Fred, you might disagree with me. But the, the other component there is that means that forty percent of our streets are either fair or poor. That's what it means. And we, we're spending, right now, we're spending ten million a year for maintenance. And based on that, ten-million-dollar outlay, that, that Street Saver Pavement Program Management System that we've got set up, that's right where we're supposed to be at ten million. So we, we've got some, we're doing good from that, from that perspective. Give us more money and we'll do a better job.
So I have the final question for you, Daryl. Let's bring it back down to just Paso Robles. If you were on the council, what would be your vision that you would like to see Paso Robles become?
What's wrong with what we have now? Look at who's sitting behind me. How can we better that? You know, we've, we've got a good community here. We're addressing the the housing, the unhoused issues. We're, we're, we're addressing streets. We're addressing growth issues. I think we're on track. So how are we gonna improve that? Keep on keeping on, I guess.
So any thoughts, closing thoughts that you would like to give to the council and, and, you know, briefly add to your talk tonight?
John, I, I don't know what to say. I'm invested in this company and the city and these people behind me. I just, I just wanna be responsive and do what is best for the city, not for me. And sometimes those are hard choices. But I've been here all my life. And I, I've sort of been, I felt a conviction that it was time that I actually turned around and gave something back. And it's not a sacrifice. It's an investment. I'm not sacrificing my time. I'm not sacrificing my time. I'm investing in the city.
Alright, well, thank you for your service to this country, and also stay engaged if things don't go well tonight. But we want to see you back.
Things will go well. Regardless of what this choice and decision is with, with the council, we're gonna have a stellar individual sitting up there in Steve's place.
Very good. Thank you for coming, Daryl.
Thank you.
Alright.
Mr. Hammond, that completes all of the interviews. So at this point, we would take public comment unless you wanted to take a brief recess.
Yeah, this is the time, actually, that we kind of wanted to allow public for any comment. If anybody in the public wishes to make a comment, we can go ahead and hear you now. So, Daryl, or Dale, go ahead.
You know, Augustine, I just wanna wish you luck.
Thanks, Dale. Michael.
Gentlemen, you have a tough decision here. Great candidates. But I think there's one that has, has shined. I think you all should really consider objectively somebody who's from a district that understands the level of need in that district. And Linda George fits that. She fits that person. If you really want to have somebody that's gonna represent a district and do it well, smart, a lot of, a lot of background, excellent presentation, doesn't have an axe to grind, but certainly has a desire to make her district a better place. So I would say to you, notwithstanding the great people that just came up and spoke, that Linda George is the one that you should pick. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay. We'll close the public comment. And then Melissa, do you have any letters of support or communication that you wanted to also give the council?
Yes, and I'll also clarify, there were no callers online.
Okay, no call.
In addition, I do have the names of letters of support that were received. We received twenty-eight letters of support for Elizabeth Lee from the following people: Katie Hayward, Chris Raiders, Manu Fiorentini, Ty Christensen, Tyson Hayward, Wendy Lewis, Selena Hanrahan, Gretchen Radek, Heidi Harrison, Sarah Tomasetti, Gillette Alexander, Millie Drum, Lisa Lou Davis, Cindy Dixon, Karen Blaney, Kristy Lair, Kurt Leglater, Heidi Negranti, Carolyn McNairn, Paul Gonzalez, Gwen Severson, Nicole Haisma, Michelle Thatcher, Amy Forgett, Jennifer Christensen, Sarah Vogt, Vikel, and Scott Hawley, and Tom Burgett. We received no other letters of support for other candidates.
Alright, then we'll go ahead and then close the Sure, go ahead.
I received a lot of different letters. Are you talking about letters that didn't make it to your desk? Are you talking about letters that didn't make it to your desk?
If they didn't make it to my desk and they didn't get a response from me, they're not on this list. They would not.
Just, just let the record show that I think all of us received a lot of letters in support of other candidates as well. You want us to forward those to you at some point or too late at this juncture?
I'll let the city attorney clarify.
So if you've received communications, that would be an ex parte communication. So we'd like you to disclose that if you have that information available to you as to who you've spoken with or received communication from. And then if you have them available, you can forward them to the city clerk. But really, it's most important just this evening to clarify that you've received letters of support. And if you know who they're from, that would be good to share.
So I'll go ahead and speak up.
Sure, go ahead.
I did have a meeting with, and discussion with Sharon Roden and also with Liz in person and with Sarah. And I received a number of letters, probably 20 plus letters for Sharon Roden's support. And we saw, we found, I think there's two or three other candidates in addition to Liz that were also supported on my email and I will forward those to you.
And I will throw in too, that I had three of the individuals call me. It was Chris Beal, Liz Lee and Sharon Roden all contacted me by phone. We had a brief conversation, basically just talked about their intent to run. So other than that, that's all I had.
And I had the same, the only one I actually talked to personally about this was Liz Lee. And, but I've gotten all kinds of emails, mostly emails. And I did respond to everyone by saying, thank you. And I intend to go in here and hear the interviews and keep an open mind until after the interviews are done and then make a decision as to who I'm going to choose. And that's how I responded to all of them. All right? Thank you.
And I, I had meetings with Liz, with Linda and with Sharon. And I will forward the emails to most of this evening.
All right. So now's the time then we bring it back to council to discuss. Again, fully that everyone here, if there's somebody that wants to bring up a certain particular candidate first, we could certainly do that and open up a conversation. So.
So can I, I'd like to start with a question for our city attorney.
Sure.
So Elizabeth, is, is it appropriate to, what I'd like to do is maybe it, maybe the top three choices, I don't know how we do that, but invite them back for another presentation time or questions? Can we do that?
So it's up to the council how you want to proceed. What we had discussed a few weeks ago when we set this meeting date was that you were going to talk to, talk amongst yourselves here in the meeting, deliberate. And if you could come to a sort of consensus, we'd come back on the third. If you wanted to follow a different process or you weren't able to, to get to conclusion tonight, then we would schedule another meeting.
So say that again. About, just about another meeting. Could we do it tonight or would we have to come back?
You could do it either way. So if you, if you want to continue tonight and deliberate and if you have additional questions for people, you can bring those up. Again, as we discussed in the beginning, we want to be consistent. So any question you ask to one, you would ask to whoever remaining in the process at that point for consistency. But you can do that this evening or we can, if we need to schedule another meeting, we can do that or we can do more on the third.
Okay. And then before I start talking about who I'd like to recommend to bring back, I am floored, floored and impressed with the quality of the people that have attended tonight. It is so, such a relief after people not even signing up to run for city council like in Chris's district. And I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you. This is what Pastor Robles is all about. And maybe it's that spirit of Steve's working really good up there for us and bringing everybody to the table. So I don't know any other way of doing it. Maybe we can, I can recommend some names and see if.
Yeah. I was, because I can, I can kind of start and you guys can follow. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't look at an individual, whether it's male or female, it's just what I'm kind of looking for personally is myself is somebody that really knows Pastor Robles, has some business sense, run a business and has some common sense, basically some grounded things that I, I kind of connected with on a lot of the answers that were given, you know? And actually the three that I kind of, you know, brought to my mind, of course, was Sharon Roden, Sarah Martin and Liz Lee. Those three right there pretty much started me thinking that, you know, we could, I could work with an individual like that. And again, it's got to be for a short period of time. And at that point, everybody needs to understand this is 14 months. And then at that point, the whole public gets to vote themselves on this. And this wouldn't be a council appointment. Then the person would have to also run for that seat again. So in the interim, so to speak, to fill a fifth position on this council, those are the three that I kind of started thinking about personally. So I'll open up to that. Anybody else like to fill in?
I agreed with two of your three totally. And then I had another third and that was Linda George. I thought she has some very good knowledge, tremendous knowledge and ability and time. And really wants to be in touch with the people.
So John, I'll, I have the same three as you, Sharon Roden, Liz Lee and Sarah.
Chris?
Well, I'll, I'll go with Sharon with Liz. And I'm kind of split if we're doing three between Sarah and Linda. I think I'm impressed with Linda's familiarity with government services. I, I'm not sure if she would get lost with, with all the stuff that's going on at Bass. So she isn't such a wide-ranging field of vision to kind of focus that down. I've worked with Sarah before on boards at Main Street, for example, Chamber. I know she's very capable. So yeah, that, that would be a tough split.
So if we've got basically four people out of the eight, we've narrowed it down to that group. What would be your, the council's thought? Do you want to bring them back for further questioning? Maybe it's not so much the non-scripted things, but maybe some scenarios and things that we might want to find out more about them?
I, I was just asking, you know, if we're trying to stay on process to bring this back by October 3rd, I don't know what that aligns with scheduling and has to be a public meeting, so.
Yeah, we could do it.
We're going to do more.
It's a continued meeting.
You want to vet the questions?
It's 8:30. And so what I'm hoping that we could possibly do this tonight, at least get narrowed down to the point. We do have a window of time for tomorrow afternoon too. But then that would have to be a complete open meeting again, correct?
It would be an open meeting. We would adjourn this meeting to a date and time specific within five days. So tomorrow works. So you actually have until November to make this appointment because you have 60 days. So you're not in any rush. You can do a process, whatever process makes sense to the council. But if you wanted to continue tonight, you could. If you wanted to come back tomorrow afternoon, we could do an adjourned meeting tomorrow afternoon. We could come back on the third instead of having the appointment made on the third. You could do additional interviews on the third. And then we could schedule the appointment for the future whenever is appropriate.
Or, or could we say interview, decision and swearing in on the same night?
You could absolutely do that.
Swearing in when?
On the same night. So if you wanted to bring the three or four people back on the third, you could do additional interviewing on that evening and make a decision. And we would do the swearing in that evening.
Do we, do we know what's on the agenda for the third? I mean, how hell.
Fairly likely. I think Melissa showed it to me the other day and it's not really heavy.
We have three presentations, seven consent items and we have three discussion items. Fourth quarter report for Echo, an oak tree removal item and the liaison appointment that we were anticipating discussing if you make an appointment for the other district.
Yeah.
Which we would wait and do that in the time.
Tonight. If we're all here.
I think we should do it tonight, take a few minutes.
That would be my preference. Sorry. So how would we then do this? Do you want to?
Five minute answer?
Yeah. That's what I'm wondering. Maybe we can bring the, the four back up again and individually call them separately one more time and make final deliberation from that.
Sure. And would you like them all to stay in the room at the same time so they hear each other's answers or we can?
I don't personally care myself.
It's up to you guys.
You know?
I don't, I don't mind them staying in the room.
I don't mind.
We're good.
So why don't we do that then? All right, let's go ahead and bring up our.
Could we do one thing?
Go ahead.
Take a break.
All right. We'll stand adjourned for five minutes here for Councilman Gregory. Let's go ahead and call the meeting back to order, please. We're kind of waiting for the ladies to get back from the restroom part of it, I guess. So if we could have the four that we talked about, Liz Lee, Linda George, Sharon Roden and Sarah Martin come on up in the front row if we can. That way you'll be easier getting to the microphone. Okay. So I think what we're trying to do here is finalize our thoughts between the four of you at this point. And council would like to, I think, ask more further questions about individual things that we want to just talk about. So get to know you maybe a little more. So who would like to start off first and who would you like to have first?
Something to ask. And this can be a question for all of you. And that is.
Well.
One candidate.
Yeah. One ca, oh. Because the microphone's got to be recorded. So why don't we just go ahead? Linda, why don't you come up first then? All right? All right.
And just real quick, my question is that I know each of you have ideas about the district and the city. So you represent a district and those are the voters who make the decision as to whether you're going to stay or leave. But every decision you make affects the entire city, not just your district. So it's important to know what you think about the entire city's issues as well as just the issues in your district and differentiate between them, please.
Okay. As far as District One is concerned compared to the rest of the city. Well, District One has a different composition of residents. Primarily it's highly Hispanic. And I think that as far as it can be a part of the rest of the district or the rest of the city is like I mentioned earlier, is that I could foresee the, this being like a little Mexico. In all our major cities, we have a little Saigon, a little Mexico, you know, Koreatown and things like that. And even though we're a small town, we could still kind of propagate or appropriate that kind of mentality. I think it's important that the Hispanic residents get to have their part of the city, so to speak. And what I had envisioned earlier today was how neat would it be if we had like an Olaveta Street in LA? And what I had envisioned earlier today was how neat would it be if we had like an Olaveta Street in LA? And that when tourists come here, they will want to go to North County to go see what's happening. Um, and I think that that's important because there, we shouldn't be an area where I've been told I live in Mexico, um, you live in the ghetto. Well, I've lived in these types of areas my entire life, so I don't perceive it that way. It's actually, you know, it's nice. It's okay. Um, I saw, um, for instance, the entire street of Takadillas. It sounds silly, but it can happen. Um, things like that. And I think it would be important to incorporate the culture of the composition of District One into the rest of the city. Um, and, and it's not about acceptance or inclusion. It's just simply about having a piece of the city or the town that's served.
Ms. George, can you just pull the microphone a little bit closer? They're having a little trouble picking you up.
I can sing.
I don't think we need that. Just make sure everybody can hear you.
But, um, primarily that, I mean, uh, I think that there's a reputation of having more crime than other areas. And I think it would be nice to see some of that. A typical politician would say to reduce crime weights, crime rates, but I also can see where we can just, um, kind of tweak the neighborhood a little bit to where the, the, uh, that we can see into it without having to be in it. We have the high school right at the end. Um, I think that's an important part to the city. Uh, you know, having all the kids here and with the parks that you guys are all upgrading, Uptown Park and everything, I'm starting to see all the residents go that way now. And enjoying everything that you guys have built. So I think it's just important. Um, I know that it's not primarily Hispanic where I live, but that is what the area that I live in. And I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to start making the city as a whole just work together with whoever we are, wherever we are.
I have a quick question then too. Um, I know you've been here four years from what you said. Have you served on any, uh, city committees or any kind of, uh, government organization for the city?
Yes, I'm not, uh, I've never really been local. I've always done everything on a statewide level. So, um, when I was with SCIE Local 1000, I was a state worker. We helped pass the fast work, food, fast food worker campaign, fifteen dollars an hour. We lobbied eighteen offices and I, uh, we passed SB 1234, which was Secure Retirement For All, and it was for the private sector. It wasn't even for government employees. Um, I've also am with GSMOL right now dot, uh, org there. We are protecting all of the mobile manufacturing homes in California. We have two bills that are on the governor's desk right now. That took a lot of lobbying. Um, one is to, again, my goal was to keep low income housing low. So when the water hike came, I got upset. The water hike came and then I said, we got to fix this. Well, that happenedstance GSMOL was working on the water bill. I gave them language, amended language, and it sailed right through the Capitol. And so I, I mean, I think that there's a lot of things that can, that can actually, um, that I've been involved with, but really it's always, it's never been with a group. I've always been part of a situation in which it happened to me. So like when I spoke earlier and I said, I, I prefer helping the whole. If it happens to me, it's happening to someone else. And someone else may not be as resilient as I am or assertive, I call aggro assertive, I can be.
Yeah, we got to keep it short if we can.
That was.
My last question, I want, I wanted to follow up. Um, how do you feel about safety in general, police and fire funding? What's your thought on?
Well, I think that, um, I love the fire department here. Um, I love the police department. I think they're fine. I think that there are some, some issues. I walked around the city when I first moved here and I talked to a lot of residents. That's what I do. I talk to a lot of residents here. And I think, again, what I initially said, there's nothing so wrong here that it's broken, nothing. But everything can be always enhanced, always.
Very good. Thank you, madam.
Yes, Linda, I have a question for you.
Sure.
In your experience, you've got a lot of knowledge and experience. Have you ever sat on a board and operated a budget like the size of our budget?
No, I have not.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
I have two questions. Uh, how often do you come to, uh, our city council meetings? And, uh, what's the best use of our TOT funds?
Your tier two funds?
TOT.
TOT, oh. Well, the second question I cannot answer. As far as city's council is concerned, um, I do listen to on YouTube sometimes or watch it. Um, my, my, my head is always in the state stuff. You know, I'm working against AB5 and the PRO Act and stuff like that, but, um, what was your first question?
How, uh, how often do you come to the city council meetings?
Oh, yeah, that's right. So when I come, I honestly, to be honest, I count on Jan Albin to really monitor the meetings and disseminate information. That's why I haven't come all the time. When I come, it's because I was like for the water opposition, due process is important. Due process is one of the most important things that people deserve. Um, but I do listen. I do pay attention to all of the statewide politics primarily. You know, all the bills, the legislation, legislative session just ended, so we're there.
Thank you for being engaged. That's, that's important. You have another question?
That was it. There's a question. What, would you, you don't know what?
I didn't, what does TOT stand for?
Transient Occupancy Tax.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah. The tax that you guys impose on people, on tourists that come here? They want to visit, they got to pay.
What's, what's the, so the city charges it now. It's not, that's not the question. The question is, what's our, when we receive it? What is this, what is the best use?
Oh, the best use of it. You know, that's a really good question. Um, I would say, well, you know, I'm a fan of government employees. I would say training, outreach. I think that training, we can never not stop learning our jobs, so. If that, if it's available for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, Linda, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're next in line, Sarah, so you might as well be next. Okay.
The hot seat.
Okay, anybody like to start?
Oh, I'll ask the same question again. Took, can try to be even handed to everybody.
Okay.
So District One is District One. It has issues within the district. But then when you're sitting on the city council, the votes that you're making are votes that affect the entire city. So what is your vision within your district? And then what is your vision of the entire city and how do they mesh?
Okay, I think you have to be mindful of your district because they're the ones who vote you in there. So they're going to want your, the, um, they're going to want the answers. If you say something to them, they're going to want that. But in turn, like you said, Pass Robles is, we're all together. So you can't just vote on your stuff in your district and make their lives happier and then exclude everybody else. It has to be very even. And so I think if you, uh, take that into consideration for everybody when you're making these decisions, obviously, yes, your, your first response, or your first responsibility is to your district. But you want to, we're, we're all in this together. We're all here together. So you want to make sure that everybody is, um, you're not favoring one district versus another. You want to make sure that everybody feels that we're taking care of the entire city.
Okay, question that I had, Sarah, I know you're a businesswoman. Do you have time to do this job?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, and my eighteen year old is done with him, so he's, you know, doesn't have to be such a mother to him anymore. Um, I do have time now. Um, I didn't for a while. Um, I've cut back a lot of my professional responsibilities. I am immediate past president of the California National Association of Insurance and Financial Advisors. So, um, I will be done with that in January. Um, and the immediate past president doesn't have a whole lot of responsibilities. I'm still on a member of the, uh, chamber board, but obviously I'll have to step down from that and I understand that. Um, and yeah, I, I do have time to do this.
So as far as big ticket items in the city, um, you know, streets are pretty much what most everybody has on their mind because that's what they use the most every day.
Right.
Back out of their driveway and they, they use our street and they see the condition of it. What's your thought as far as maybe your observation of where we've come in repairing the streets and where we might be able to go? Any thoughts, any ideas?
Well, everybody looks at their neighborhood, so I'll look at my neighborhood.
Yeah.
Um, it needs help. I'm over there by KPRL. Oh, I, we've called the city repair several times to come in and fix potholes. But it's not just the streets. I think it's also like the, the gutter and the sidewalks. It's, it's the whole structure. If you just keep putting pavement on and you don't have things to contain the pavement, it's going to continue to wash away. So I think it's not just the pavement. I think it's also building the infrastructure for, you know, the curb and the gutter.
And I'll ask a question too about police and fire and safety. How do you feel about those departments?
I think they've done a fantastic job. Um, I, I work on Spring Street, so I'm always hearing sirens all day long. Um, so I believe they're, they're very responsive, uh, very involved in the community, been very, um, very impressed by them. I'm glad that we don't have the issues that other cities and other towns have. I think that we do have a Passo pride when it comes to our police and our fire, and I'm very proud of that.
Very good. All right. Thank you, Sarah. Steve?
So I'll take that, uh, question a step further. So my question is, would you be in favor of continuing to support the police department?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then do you have, uh, any special pet project? Somebody you'd like to get into as a council person?
Any pet pad projects? Um, not at this moment. I think that there's, I'm interested in a couple of different things. I'm going to get some more information on them before I decide where I'd like to spend my time, but I have a couple of ideas. Again, I want to keep the, the children, the kids in here in Passo. I think that's very important. Um, the, uh, the diversity with, you know, this, um, making sure that, yeah, I think that's a big thing is making sure that my son can live here. And I think that's multifaceted. Um, I think that's probably my, would be my pet project.
Thank you.
Chris?
And I'll ask the same question. Uh, two questions. Uh, how often do you attend city council meetings and what's the best use of our TOT?
I don't attend regularly the city council meetings, but I'm very involved with the city. I know that you and I are on the, um, the advocacy, uh, chamber, uh, committee. And so I, I'm very dialed in that way. I'm also very involved with the chamber in other ways. Um, so I'm, I don't come to council, but I, I am involved. Um, as far as the, the TOT, um, I knew a lot more of it when I was the chair for, or chairman of the board for the chamber and I kind of stepped away, so I kind of forgot. So I don't want to say anything too off balance, but, um, I, it's, I think it's important to put that money back into future growth of, of Pass Robles. If we're going to take money from tourists to, to build up, we want to make sure that those, um, those places where they come and, and they, uh, are, want them to return. So we, we want to make sure that we continue to build that up.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sarah?
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Liz?
Could I start out? Okay, I guess I'll start out again and, and you know, my question, you've heard it twice.
Yeah.
Uh, basically, you know, it's the district issues and then there's the citywide issues. And how do you deal with each and how do you blend them?
Well, I think with District One, it's definitely a different makeup than the other districts. We have the businesses. Um, it's more densely populated as far as, and more diverse in District One. And so I would like to see a lot more emphasis on building business, small businesses that are located within our, our town. Because I think a lot of them are just really on the edge and we, if, I'm just really interested in, in that part a lot because that is like the backbone, the small businesses in, in our community. And so I feel that that is something that I really want to emphasize. Obviously, the parking is a huge deal. I personally would love to go door to door and see, and we have some data, but I'd like to see what it is and how it's really affecting the businesses, the parking situation. We have to come to, uh, some sort of conclusion on that for sure. And then the north side of, of town is, I feel like it's so separate from the rest. And I feel like it needs to somehow integrate more and become more fluid and, and inclusive. That's how I feel because they live, I live right on Seventeenth Street. And so I see just that whole area a lot. And I'd like to see that just being integrated and economically and, um, just let it all blend together. And then overall, um, I would say I would just like to see all the roads being fixed, um, all the facilities being upgraded, um, all the parks being maintained, which Barney Schwartz is going into a new phase. I'd like to see everyone have recreation overall. And so I guess that's the difference between my district and the rest.
I have a question then. Um, are you versed fairly well with, uh, some of the programs that we've instituted with regard to streets maintenance and, uh, our safety programs, how we're improving our, can you, what, what's your feeling with the overall impression that the city has done with regard to the infrastructure and safety, for instance?
My impression is that we are on track, it seems. It seems like the funding is there and that it is progressing. I feel it's, I feel it needs to maybe, I know it's not easy, but it really needs to speed up as far as the street improvements. Um, infrastructure because of all the developments that are coming, that's already, um, um, planned, like the Chandler, the Olson, the, the, the whole development that's happening right now. We really need to ramp it up and get the streets and infrastructure. And I, I, I've been reading up on the bridge, the forty-sixth bridge and all those things that will support all these projects that, that are in play right now.
Another is the traffic.
Yes, exactly. I feel like that's so important because as of now, I see that there's already a traffic situation and that concerns me greatly. And I know that things don't move super fast, but we just have to keep that infrastructure, streets, improvements, lighting, all those things because of the fact that all these housing developments and commercial projects are coming in. So that does concern me. So that's probably something I would like to really focus on, to get that ahead.
Very good.
So, um, you brought up a very interesting point, Liz. Let's talk about your integration comment about bringing the north to the, to the south together. So do you think more projects like, uh, project, the, the marketplace, something that would help that happen? Or what, what are your, do you have any ideas in that regard?
That would be great. I, I love the fact that that happened. That was major for sure to connect the north and the, and the southern region of, of our town. Um, I really would like to know what's going on with the bowling alley. I've no, I, I don't know what's happening, but that would be great to see that being renovated and, I mean, there's so much space there. Kid, there's so many things that kids need to do and there's nowhere, nowhere for them to go. I know that Sentinel Park just had their teen rec center, which is fabulous. But other than that, I see that there's a lot of potential issues if we don't have enough things for teenagers and children, so.
I have a friend who opened up a coffee shop.
Oh, yes.
Up on, uh, by the bowling alley. Kai, Kai Lewis is there all the time. And, uh, but those are the kinds of things. But the other thing that's interesting about your integration comment.
Yes.
Is the Pass Robles Youth Arts Foundation.
Right.
Um, they're attracting kids from the entire community.
Right.
And, um, be nice to see some more projects.
Absolutely. They're doing fabulous job, the Pass Robles Youth Arts Foundation, but they also have the limits of what they can do. And I, from what I know, there are people from all over coming to that place. So we could definitely use more of those kinds of services around for sure.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Same questions, Liz. Uh, how often do you come to city council meetings and what's the best use for our TOT tags?
Well, I listen to the meetings while I'm walking my dogs and running. Which is weird, right? No, but I do listen to them very often. And, um, I think I came a lot during the time when there's the whole short-term rental happening. Cause that was primarily focused on Pass Robles, but really in my district. So I was really concerned and, um, I'm all about balance for sure for this town. So, uh, so yes, I, I do listen to them. Not every time, not every, every, every other week, but yes, I do listen to it often. And as far as TOT, I guess I'm just going to go right back to putting it back into our community. Um, I think we should pour it back into maybe educational workshops for people. That would be great, I think. Um, I think that would be great use of the money. Or again, just things that our citizens can do, um, in this town. Uh, teenagers, seniors, I, I think I would pour it back into things like of that nature. And, because we have the funding. And, cause we have the funding, I, I believe, set forth for building upgrades and whatnot. So if the, if the state and federal funding is there, uh, for T O T, I would like to see a portion of that going back to the citizens to edu, you know, do some really cool educational things or, um, some neat things that, um, bring the community together and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Liz.
Sharon?
Brad, you lead off? Well, you know what I'm gonna ask?
I think so. If I remember correctly.
District One.
Yes, sir.
The issues there, then the entire city, because you're voting on both. Every vote you make really affects everything.
Yes.
Rarely does a vote, it just affect your own district. So what are your views on the two and how do you blend them?
Our district is unique. It's based in a lot of agriculture, agriculture. You know, we had the, most of the almond trees up there in the hills. In fact, I was born up at the old war memorial hospital. I think somebody's houses up where I was born now.
Yeah, somebody.
Um, but a lot of the Latino community also, uh, works in agriculture. So I think I have a link to that with my, um, deep affection for the people I worked with and have worked with for over fifty years, really. And, um, I can tell you that if there are things that, uh, affect my district, that's gonna come first. Just like my family. If there are things that affect the city as a whole, then I'll determine based on what I hear from the community as a whole, where they would like to go with that as well.
I'll, I'll throw something at you too, cause that's kind of, this last year when I ran, that was the first time my, my seat, first district, basically, had to run in a district instead of at large. So one of the things that we were always kind of concerned about is, you know, it's my district. I'm not gonna vote for Steve's unless, Brad, you help, you know, that kind of a thing, so.
I don't play that kind of game.
Yeah, I hope you're not in that mindset.
No.
Again, again, we work as a city.
Absolutely.
There are ideas that, that need to be brought forward with a particular district, no question. But that's what you're before. Um, my question is more your feeling about police and fire and safety. Well, how have we done as a city as far as taking care of our folks? What's your overall thought of how you would proceed to, to change? Or if you would align, or how, how would you feel about what we've done so far and how you might be able to add to it?
As I said earlier, I think it's the foundation of, of a, um, a good city environment. You have to have training and it's ongoing. I don't think that's anything you actually achieve and you're done. I think there has to be an outreach with the community. You know, we, I live up on Panorama and years ago, you'd never hear a siren. And now you hear sirens, multiple sirens every night. Now, I don't know if that's police or if it's paramedics, because we now use paramedics a lot, uh, where we used to use ambulance. But, um, I think it's, it's important to continue funding police and fire for training. As I said, in community efforts as well. But you know, there's another thing too, that I've, that I've recently been talking to people about. And some of the police officers and probably fire and probably teachers, but let's focus on police, are having a hard time coming here and living in this community because of the, of the housing costs. And I would like to see, at least for a temporary form, whether it's a year or two years, that we're able to link ourselves with private business and build a community, um, for people who work in our town, in the police, in the fire, possibly even teachers, to allow them to get their feet under them and then be able to build a fund to be able to buy something for themselves. Or it makes it a little bit easier for them to rent.
Mm-hmm. So another question I, I'm kind of interested, cause you're on the west side, we're on the west side, and streets. Yeah, so.
We got big bumps.
You got it.
Roots.
Yeah, especially on your corner of the.
Oh, yeah.
I think the carriers are here too.
We, we wiggle and weave in our, in our midst.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, you know, the west side certainly has, uh, a lot of older infrastructure and, and pipes and streets and curbs and gutters, tree roots. Um, you think we're doing a good job with it or is there?
Look, it's, it's, it's not a huge city, but it's, but it's, it's, it's a large town and there are a lot of streets. And I know there's been a lot of maintenance of a lot of streets around town, just not up in our neighborhood. And maybe not in my district, but as I understand, it's coming there soon. I hope, I hear.
That's why I tell everybody, everybody's, the street is on a list somewhere.
Exactly, exactly. And I don't know where we fall in that, but honestly, we've been weaving around those bumps for so many years. If, if there were other streets down below that required just as much service, if we can, we can bob and weave a little bit longer.
Well, it also equates to safety, obviously, you know?
Yes.
Nobody get hurt with our streets and things like that, so. Okay, I, I'm, I don't want to take too much time, so.
So Sharon, uh, just for your information, so our, our police department has been focusing on hiring local people. That's been helping. But this last year, we've actually increased by seven officers by helping them with an incentive to buy homes and things like that, so.
I'll be interested to talk to you regardless of what happens here about how you're achieving that.
We'll, we'll drag that out of you, so. Um, pet projects that you would have for your district, anything that you'd like to talk about?
Besides roads?
Besides what?
Besides roads.
Roads. That's more than.
Look, I, I think we, I think we probably, um, need to create a little bit better communication, uh, between areas in my district and the Latino community. I would hope there would be a little bit more, um, outreach, um, to, and, and really, really try to strengthen that part of the city, uh, going off of some of the things that Linda had talked about as well. I think they're great ideas. Um, and, uh, but I, you know, we're, we're all one, but we all have different interests in areas too, that we gravitate to. And you celebrate those things as well.
Really changed in the last few years with the market. And then we were really proud of the Uptown Park for the kids. And now we got water at the Uptown Park and, uh, we've been focusing on, on that area as a council, so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris? Well, I'm gonna have the same questions. Um, how often do you come to a city council meeting? And what's the best use of our T O T tax?
Um, I came pretty regular when we were talking about the Airbnb issues with, with permits and with the, um, hotline issues, which I still have a complaint about, cause it's not local. It goes to San Francisco. First it routes somewhere out of the state and then it goes to San Francisco. I would like to see that here local, but that's the side of the point. The other was, uh, the, huh?
That could be a pet project.
You betcha. You betcha. I'll tackle it. Um, um, what was I gonna say? Um, oh, and the other was the, the Paso Market Walk, uh, when they were building that. I didn't like the structure. I still don't. I don't think it complements the area. Not the vendors in there. I love them to death and I've gotten to know a lot of them in there. And I, our, our rental is right on the backside. I always promote that place. Uh, T O T, guess where I wanted to go? Roads.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I have one final question for you though, if you would, Sharon. Um, I mean, you're a businesswoman, you're out there and, and doing a lot of work in the fields and in the orchards. And do you have the time that, can you make the commitment to be in this seat?
Well, like I talked about earlier, a few years ago, um, my nephew and my niece are full partners, my brother and I, in our farm. My nephew is forty, my niece is thirty-seven. I hope they don't mind me giving away their ages, but, um, most of the time, people who own a business, the worst thing they can do is hold on to the strings until the very last minute. And then they die or something happens to them and their kids don't know what to do, where to go, who to call. How do you harvest? How do, how do you do any of it? So, of course, this is the excuse I use. And my wife and I like to travel, so it does allow us some freedom to do that. But it's most important for the next generation to take on those responsibilities. Because as we know, until it's on our head to make the decision, you don't really feel, you don't really feel the weight of it. And it makes a difference when, when they come to me and I'm still available and I'm still involved, but not as, not nearly as much. I wouldn't be here tonight. We sent out twelve loads today and I missed the last seven.
Wow.
So I'll be out there tomorrow, most likely, but they take a huge weight off of my shoulders. And that's part of the plan.
Okay.
So that I can do something like this.
All right. Very good, Sharon. I think that's all I question is, Liz.
I want one more.
One more, Steve?
And you're not afraid to speak up, right?
You know what? I have to tell you, you may have noticed. Now, the, our dear Mayor Martin had to rap his gavel several times. Every time I stood up there, he'd say, one minute left. I went, I've got four pages left. Or he actually cut me off on a Zoom call, cause I went a little bit too long. So I have been as concise as you will ever hear me in my life tonight.
Well, we'd like to get home from council meeting sometimes too. All right. Okay, I think that's good. Unless anybody, we're good? All right. So at this point, we've had another round of talk and understanding of the four applicants. Again, I totally understand that every one of you have done a lot for the city and, and your families. And, you know, the, just a flat commitment to even apply for this is important to me. And, you know, the sense of community, sense of, uh, helping other people service, basically, is what we kind of do here. So whatever happens in, in a little bit here, you know, we all appreciate you coming and, and applying. It's really important. And whatever happens, stay engaged. What's really important is hang in there and keep doing it.
Yeah, and I, I like to ditto what John says. So impressed that, you know, the final four too, you guys are great and you're doing, you're wonderful people. And it's a tough decision for us because we're well-qualified folks here. And please stay engaged because we need you all to be part of our community, so. And you wanna do this?
Start off?
Put a name on it.
Well, we can do that. Want a name, let's see if she got a majority.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to try and do that? Maybe we, um, well, I think like, don't we have to do it publicly though? Yeah. Right, so that's like we.
I'm sorry?
I apologize, I didn't have the mic on. Uh, we would need to, um, know who voted which way. You couldn't have a secret ballot. Um, yeah. And again, the goal tonight was just to narrow it down, so we're not gonna actually take a vote. You, you had directed us to do that on the third or whenever thereafter.
Narrow it down.
Yeah, so your goal tonight is to narrow it down.
So what we could do is just think about it tonight.
Can we make a motion to try a vote tonight or no?
Uh, no, it's not, we are not noticed for appointment.
No, I think.
That was.
Narrow it down.
I'm sorry. Uh.
My question is, can, do we need to make a motion to, to vote for it tonight or no?
So you were gonna deliberate, talk amongst yourselves and see if you could come to a general consensus? Um, and then we would invite that one or potentially two people, if necessary, back to the next meeting, um, where we would notice it for further deliberations, if necessary, and appointment and the oath. That was the direction that you had decided on at the last meeting. So that, tonight is just noticed for discussion and deliberation.
Okay. Um, I'll, I'll start off basically. I, I personally, I mean, I, like all of the candidates that we would listen to tonight. But personally, I think what I was looking for in an individual, you know, with the history in the business sense, Sharon Roden, I think, would be my candidate of choice at this point.
Okay. I would. I'll, I'll go next. Um, it's been a very hard decision because everybody is so good, but I'm gonna have to agree, John. I, Sharon Roden, um, I've known a long time. And, uh, she almost makes me cry when she talks. So, um, and I, I, I love, I like several people that are here, but, um, I think she's got the heart and experience that would really make a good candidate, so.
Chris?
Um, again, tough decision, I agree. Um, we've got some excellent candidates here, some really good folks. So I'm gonna, um, agree with John and Steve with the experience that Sharon brings. Liz, I hope you stay very much engaged. I, Sarah, I hope you stay engaged. Linda, I hope you come back. Um, thi- this is a fourteen-month appointment, if that's where the council decides to get to. Um, all of you are deserving. Um, but I, but I think just the length of time that the, the changes, uh, that I sense, uh, Sharon has seen in the city and, and where it's going to go. I think she has a really good handle on how to get us there. Uh, so I, I would agree, uh, for, uh, we bring Sharon back.
I'd like to make one promotional comment for Warren Fries.
He's not on the ballot.
He's back there.
Well, he's here, but he's not on.
No. We have opportunities on the planning commission coming up this year. And all of you would be excellent folks for that. And it's great groundwork to start as a, as a, as a process with the city. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Brad?
And I'll be the lone dissenter by a chair. I, I thought actually two of them had the broadest knowledge and understood the city best. And that was Liz and Sharon.
Yep.
And I thought Liz's background was a little more diversified. And I like the fact that she has had knowledge of redevelopment and the process you go through for redevelopment, as an example, which is something that we have to do on our own now that the state took it away. Uh, so that's why I would have chosen Liz over Sharon, but with Sharon a very close second. There, I think they're, they're two, either one of them could have done it a little bit better than the other two. The other two, I think, know their district pretty well and are, are a real asset. And I think have specific knowledge that is very valuable to the city. And I overlap with some of them tremendously in my various positions representing the city. So I, I recognize the things they were talking about.
Where Chris?
One, one comment, I just noticed on my notes. Um, I, I think as we go through, um, whatever gyrations water brings to us, I appreciate the experience that Sharon brings from an agricultural perspective. It's not residential, but the state of California is gonna be going through a lot of changes. And, um, I appreciate that experience and, um, certainly on conservation, on the best, best use of our waters, so. For that.
So at this point, it sounds like we have a consensus of Sharon Roden, but how would we handle it from here on October third?
I, I think that the intention would be to invite, uh, Sharon back on October third. And we'll agendize a matter, an item for that evening for appointment of a council member.
Okay.
And we'll provide, uh, loss for her or whoever you vote on that evening.
That'll be the, the, the officials.
That's the official action.
Right, okay.
And I have a question, Elizabeth, so if she should come ready to work that night?
Really? I mean, well.
You just.
We're gonna do this on the fruit.
It is the first item on the agenda, so.
Once, yeah, once she's sworn in, she will be seated.
Once you adopt the resolution, that person will be immediately sworn in and they will take their seat.
So probably, uh, discuss, you know, positioning the agenda item.
We got that.
Properly, whatever.
We're on it.
Okay. All right. Again, um, ladies, thank you very much. And I, I think.
Amazing.
And gentlemen, no, I was, yeah, I was addressing the four, but.
I think we set a record this, with this, this process. We've never seen so much interest in the city council and we like it because some of us are kind of getting older.
Councilman Gregory made a good point though. Um, and this is what I always look to personally, as somebody that would be coming into a council level is, what have they served on? What are their commissions? What other areas have they worked for the city before the council? And the planning commission is a perfect location for you guys because you get such a brown, uh, area of, of, of what happens here in our city and you get a good level of. area of, of, of what happens here in our city and you get a good level of, of instruction of how it works and all the different things that happen, you know, uh, with the different departments as well through the planning commission. So, um, as I've said, we are going to be picking planning commissioners out the first year, I believe, too. Warren, you know, has some vacancies coming up, so please stay engaged in anything that we have coming up. There's lots to do, lots to do. Okay? Thank you for coming.
Thank you all.
We'll stand, we'll go ahead and call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Gregory, second by Bausch, we're adjourned.
Aye.